Executive session just prior to this, so we apologize for getting started, but we will continue in just a couple of minutes. Thank you. All right, we are all here and accounted for. We would like to call our May 2, 2019 Town Council meeting to order, and we'd like to invite Councilmember Ray to assist us with the scouts.
Mayor, we have some great scouts here tonight. We'll have them introduce themselves after we have the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll invite the audience to stand, and Bennett is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, we're going to pass the microphone down and have each one of these boys give us their name and what their rank currently is. And for their participation tonight, we'll be passing out a constitution to each one of them to study and prepare, especially as you guys continue on with improving the community. So tell us your name and what your rank is.
My name is David and I am a Weeblo.
My name is Gideon and I am a Weeblo also.
My name is Henry and I'm also a Weeblo.
My name's Bennett and I'm a Weeblo.
My name's Corwin and I'm a Weeblo.
So in addition to giving these boys a round of applause, we also want to recognize their leaders who we didn't force to come up. They're finally getting a little break back there without the boys driving them crazy. But if we could give the boys and their good leader a round of applause for being here tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. At this time, we'd like to invite Dr. Dan Mooney, the pastor of Elliott Road Baptist Church, to offer our invocation this evening. Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful this evening that you have given us the awesome privilege to live in a land that gives us freedom. We thank you for those who protect our freedoms. We thank you for those who gave their lives to provide our freedom. Father, we thank you for each of those who you have allowed to be put in a place in government to serve you, but also to serve our community. We ask this evening that you grant them your wisdom, that you grant them clarity in thought and speech as they do the business and do the things that need to be done in this meeting. We thank you for what you will do and trust you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mooney, and thank you for leading your congregation as well. We love our faith groups. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. We do have several proclamations and presentations, as well as a couple of recognitions, so bear with us for a little bit. But there's been a lot of really good things happening in the town of Gilbert. We want to make sure we highlight those. Councilman Anderson will be first.
Mayor, I want to first congratulate our Economic Development Department. Every one of the staff members in that department do an excellent job in attracting new business and something that's near and dear to my heart, actually strengthening our tourism program. A few years ago, who would have thought there was tourism in Gilbert? But there is, and there's a great work that's being done. Glenn, are you here? There's Glenn. He was sick the other day, so I wasn't sure if he was going to be here or not. Good. Glenn is our tourism administrator, and I want to just read a couple of lines in this proclamation for Economic Development and Travel and Tourism Week. Whereas the U.S. Travel Association is a national nonprofit organization representing and advocating for all components of the travel industry, and whereas Gilbert was the first economic development organization in Arizona to be recognized by the International Economic Development Council as an accredited economic development organization, and this is the real key one, whereas tourism in Gilbert generated $224 million in visitor spending, created 1,700 jobs, and resulted in $25 million in hotel sales in 2018. And now therefore, I, Jen Daniels, and Mayor, the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim May 6 through the 11th, 2019, as Economic Development and Travel and Tourism Week. Again, we want to congratulate our Economic Development Department for the great work that they're doing with this and present them with this.
Could I have our Public Works team to the front? As you may or may not know, National Public Works Week is upon us. And we have a fantastic team and partners here with our town. So if you could be so kind to share your name and your role in the town and pass the mic.
David Fabiano, Town Engineer.
Mark Hunsaker, I'm with the Environmental Services, where the guys pick up your trash.
Mark Horn, Waste Water Manager.
Andrew Jackson, Water Manager.
Yau Farm, Assistant Public Works Director.
Curtis Charlie, Streets Manager.
Susanna Struble, CIP Manager and Assistant Town Engineer.
Ryan Blair, CIP Supervisor.
Toby Crooks, Project Manager.
Without this team, we would not have the wonderful community that we have. So can we have a round of applause to this fantastic team? All of you deserve these messages. And again, on behalf of the mayor and the council, we want to thank you for all you do for our community. So with that, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, importance to sustainable and resilient communities like Gilbert, and to the public health and high quality of life and well-being of the people in the town of Gilbert. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas in the public interest of for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the town of Gilbert, to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, Be It Now, and therefore, on behalf of Mayor Daniels. Of the town of Gilbert, do you hereby proclaim May 19 through May 25 of this year, 2019, as National Public Works Week? So congratulations to all of you. You know, Mayor, there's another cowboy hat in his room.
That's a stellar team right there. We miss Jessica, too. I know she's away right now, but thank you all.
Next on our list of proclamations is to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week, and I'd like to have Lisa Maxwell and Chevelli come and join me, please. I should have just said Lisa and Chevelli. These ladies, along with three others in their department, do so much for this town that I couldn't even begin to list it for you. So I'm going to read this proclamation so you can hopefully hear some of what they do. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Jen Daniels, we hereby proclaim May 5 through the 11th, 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week in Gilbert, Arizona, and further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk, Lisa Maxwell, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Congratulations. So we have Lisa, we have Chevelli, and then we have Natrice, Robin, and Judy in the clerk's office, and we appreciate them.
I've been so excited for today, and I'm really grateful for all the people who are here who helped make the 9th Annual East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast a reality. There's a whole team of people, and a lot of them are here today. So all of you who participated in the East Valley Mayor Prayer Breakfast, will you please come forward and stand with me? It's your work that actually makes this presentation possible. So come stand, really, literally with me. Hold me up if you don't mind. Okay. So I have no doubt that this group of individuals could probably pull off any event, any celebration, any party, anything, but they put their time, energy, and efforts specifically towards the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast and have done so, a lot of them, since its inception. So they're not new to service and to giving. This year's recipient of the proceeds from the East Valley Breakfast is Winged Hope, and I see Jessica Nicely and a couple members of her team here. Will you please come forward? I have something really incredible to present to you. I actually texted Jessica a couple days ago when I saw the check, and I said, has anybody told you what we're giving you yet? And she said, no. And I said, good, because I want it to be a surprise. I think it's worth noting that our Chair, Joel Biggs, Joel led the way, and his good wife, Stephanie, who I happen to love on many levels, they're great people. But you all raised the most money you've ever raised for any of the nonprofits that have benefited. So that's the first amazing feat. Lots of volunteer hours and lots of contributions. I want to recognize also the sponsors, Southwest Gas, Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, who will also host next year's event, and the Gilbert Sun News. There were also incredible speakers from our faith groups. I saw a couple of them are here. Well, you're representing Eric. Okay, good. Good people. Good people all around. The John Vulcan Academy, which was also in Gilbert, provided the food, really great food, and our Gilbert Fire Team did all the pancakes. They're good at what they do. It's true, on all sorts of things. But it's my privilege, and I'm very excited about this, to present this check to you today. Jessica, you do good work for a lot of good people, and we were able to raise $14,804.60 for Winged Hope. I'll hold this, and now I'm going to make you speak and tell us. You didn't know you were going to get this much. And I didn't know you were going to get this much either. I'm very excited about this. But when I see chamber representatives, too, that did a ton of work to help us get here, so I'm sorry I didn't mention you earlier. Jessica, will you talk just a little bit about what this dollar amount means to your organization and really ultimately to the people that you serve?
Well, gosh, just thank you all so much. This just means the world. Thank you guys so much for all you do. We put on events, too, and I know it's not easy, and every little detail takes so much time and effort and sacrifice, time away from your family, and so thank you all so much for that. Gosh, today we spent, Joyce and I, Joyce is my president, and Jamie Lynn's one of my board members, they're here with me tonight, and we spent a lot of hours today in a courtroom with a victim. And it's just amazing to be here and on this end of it. And we're just reminded every day we spent, before we went to court, we were in our office with another victim of sexual violence. And so we literally spend every day, you know, it's 24/7. Violence doesn't pause for us to have time with our families or friends, and we have to make that happen. And the funds that you all raised are going to help us provide counseling to victims of violence, to their families. One thing we do differently is we don't just serve the victim of violence, but we serve the family that they're going back into. So when there's sexual violence, it doesn't just affect that child or that person, it affects the whole family. And so these funds will go to help heal not just the victims of violence we serve, but their families as well, so that we can be healing the entire family and thus healing this community. So I just can't say thank you enough. I'm so appreciative to all of you, truly, all of you up there, too. Thank you. This means the world to us. It can feel some days like we're doing this all by ourselves, and this is just a beautiful reminder that we're not alone in this fight, and I'm just so grateful for you all. Thank you.
We're going to take a quick picture, and real quick, I also wanted to point out the artwork that was created at the event. You can see right there, up there on the dais there, that's the woven fabric. We had everyone that was at the event participate by writing down some of their hopes, really for the future of our community, and it's been woven into one tapestry because our theme was Fabric of Hope, and that's what you all do. So thank you. All right, and last but absolutely not least, we have an amazing family here. Would the Horton family, please come forward? William, there's a whole group of people, super proud of you. I hope you know that. I have a certificate I want to present to you. But I think you're going to need to tell us a little bit about Dream Ride USA and all the work that you've done. Your mom, obviously, your parents, is this your brother?
Yes.
I love brothers. Brothers are part of the support team, I'm sure, your parents as well. Tell us about Dream Ride.
Well, Dream Ride is all about doing a, raising money in Special Olympics, in K-9 programs, and all fallen officers.
Nice work, William. We're really proud of you. I think you're going somewhere amazing next. Is that true? Did I hear that right? Is there another trip in your future?
Yes.
Where are you going?
Australia.
And you're representing Special Olympics, USA, and Australia?
Yes.
That's amazing. We're really proud of you. You also get to represent Gilbert, so we're going to make sure we get him some Gilbert swag to wear the entire time. I think it's worth noting, too, that Noel works in our prosecutor's office and is a great team member here. I see lots of the prosecutor team here, and we're really grateful for you. I have a little certificate I want to present to you, and I'll read you it. It is my pleasure to extend congratulations to William Horton. William has been selected to attend the 2019 Dream Ride in Australia, Adelaide? Am I saying that right? Okay. I don't speak Australian, so there you have it. William attended Dream Ride USA in 2015, '16, and '17, which made him eligible to be nominated for the 2019 Dream Ride. On behalf of the entire Gilbert Town Council and as the mayor of Gilbert, we congratulate you on being selected, and we couldn't have found a better representative for Gilbert. So thank you so much, and we can't wait to wish you well on that big ride.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that does complete our proclamations and presentations. About, oh, we have one more. Just kidding. I'm so sorry. I knew that. It's Agenda Item 6, the annual report presentation by the Gilbert Historical Society, also known as, better known as HD South. Marty, are you taking the lead on this one? Awesome. Thanks, Marty. Kayla and Marty will come up to do the official presentation for HD South. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you. Mayor Daniels and council members, I am Marty Tomjanovic, Chair of the Gilbert Historic Society Board of Directors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you for a few moments and highlight the accomplishments of this society this past year. Our goal continues to be growing our organization into a new intergenerational communities for all ages model with expanded programming with a financially sustainable budget. We continue to take great strides towards this goal. Last year, we told you that we rebranded the organization with a new Doing Business As name. As we expanded our mission to include not just history, but all arts and culture, the Gilbert Museum, historical museum, name just didn't fit anymore. While our parent organization will continue to be the Gilbert Historical Society Incorporated, and we will always be the home of the Gilbert Museum, we announced our new DBA name as HD South, given that the location of our building is at the southern gateway of the Heritage District. I'm pleased to introduce Kayla Kohler, the president and CEO, the person who does it all, I might add, of HD South, to tell you the rest of our activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Cook, and council members, here are some of the highlights of the last year. We held our 7th Annual, a night at the museum signature fundraising gala in March. Once again, it was a magical night in Gilbert. You may remember that our first year, we netted $20,000. I'm very pleased to tell you that this year, our net was $67,000. Please say February 29 of 2020, where we will be celebrating the 100th birthday of Gilbert, and we will have a Roaring Twenties themed event. Our public programs have continued to increase in depth in attendance. This year, we held 91 classes with a total of 853 participants. Our programs have included history cafes, genealogy workshops, science cafes, STEM classes, music and art workshops, classes that focused on the countries of our two sister cities, and weekly yoga and storytelling. Many of our programs were in collaboration with other organizations like Ascend, the Mesa Family History Center, SRP, Covino Art Colony, STEM Revolution, Irish and Chinese Cultural Centers, and even town employees. Now, this past Tuesday, we had a program on Wallace and Laddmo with a sold-out crowd. Now, who knows what Wallace and Laddmo was? Let me tell you what Wallace and Laddmo was. Wallace and Laddmo was the Valley's version of Captain Kangaroo or Romper Room, and it ran on TV here in the Valley from 1954 until 1989. Now, children would get selected to go to the Wallace and Laddmo show, and the special treat is they would receive a Laddmo bag at the Wallace and Laddmo show. So we are very excited to give you your own personal Laddmo bag, and we gave those to all the participants this past Tuesday. And one little story, we had a gentleman that came to our program on Tuesday. He was 50 years old, and he had gotten, he's a lifelong native of Arizona. He had been selected to go on the Wallace and Laddmo show when he was a child, but he got the chickenpox, so he couldn't go. So he came to our program, and they had some raffle prizes, the speaker did, and they had a really giant Laddmo bag, and he won the Laddmo bag. So he fulfilled his childhood dream, and it was one of the highlights of his life, he said. So I hope you enjoy your Laddmo bag. I will tell you, I asked the speaker, what goes in a Laddmo bag? And he said they had different sponsors through the years, and it was whatever the sponsor wanted to put in it. So we were the sponsor of our program, so you got tchotchkes from us. So there you go. You're welcome. Now, we've continued our collaboration with Art Intersection in Gallery 4, and last April and May, we hosted the 21st National Exhibit by the Embroiderers Guild of America, called Through the Needle's Eye. This was a national touring show that had never been to Arizona before. We saw visitors from all over the world who came to see this exhibit. Now, our Gallery 4 underwent an extensive remodel in the summer, and the space now rivals art galleries everywhere. In September and October, we hosted a photographic exhibit on water by Dr. Stephen Strom and Kathleen Velo. And of course, we hosted the two annual shows of the Gilbert Visual Art League. We do have a new art exhibit opening later this month, so you'll want to be sure to see that. We held our second annual Breakfast with Santa event, and it had a sold-out attendance of 300 people. And of course, we continued with all of our usual activities, such as celebrating our 14th Annual Art of Quilting Show. We had our annual Memorial Day event, and we will have this year's event on May 27 at 9:00 a.m. So mark your calendars. This is a free event for the community. We also hosted many visitors, school field trips, and scout groups, as we always do. This year, we had over 8,000 visitors to HD South, including over 3,800 from Gilbert, over 1,800 from other parts of Arizona, 2,200 from other states, and over 200 from other countries. Now, while I may be the head of this organization, the heart of our organization is our volunteers. They quilt, they serve at the front desk, they help with programs and special events, they serve on professional committees, they help manage the collection of artifacts, photographs, and archives, they clean the museum, and they literally do everything. they clean the museum, and they literally do everything it takes to keep our facilities and our activities going to make the biggest impact in our community. They gave over 10,000 volunteer hours to us this past year. We could do nothing without our volunteers. Now, we are in the latter stages, as you know, of the silent phase of our Building Communities for All Ages capital campaign. Our goal is to raise $2 million. We're halfway there. We'll be renovating and preserving the existing museum buildings, constructing a new 6,500-square-foot ADA-accessible building for expanded programs, exhibits, and rental space. And we will renovate the courtyard for more program, event, and rental space as well. We have built-in revenue generation into this plan to ensure our future sustainability. We've got a dynamic leadership team assembled, as you know, chaired by Dr. Adelaide Severson of Bush Tex. And this fall, we will be entering the community phase, and you will be hearing a lot more publicly about what we're doing and ways that you can participate. And we are well on our way. Every year, I wonder how in the world can we keep doing more and more and more? But we do. And expanding our mission and expanding arts and culture in this community is working. And it was a banner year for the Gilbert Historical Society, and we appreciate all the support you give us. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't see any questions from the council, but I think I can speak for all of us when I say thank you. And thank you for all the work that you and your volunteers do. We always look forward to the gala every year. I know that's a very fun event for all of us to participate in, but just the day-to-day things that you do. I was very sad to hear of the passing of Iva Ruth recently. You know, she's been a longtime supporter and contributor. And so I just want you to know that we are watching, we're paying attention, and that we are absolutely supportive of your work. So thank you.
Thank you.
And now I know what a Ladmo bag is, so that's cool. There's some cool old pictures in here, too, which will be neat. Excited to put those up. All right. Now, we've completed our proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. I'm sorry to HD South for almost skipping you there. Do we have any requests to speak on communications?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one individual. If we can have Mr. Paul Rodriguez come to the podium. Paul, if you can identify yourself and place a residence, and you will have three minutes to share with us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council. My name is Paul Rodriguez. I'm an advocate for homeless cats and kittens in Gilbert. Last time I was here, I unfortunately had to tell you the story about Cliff. Cliff is a cat that belonged to someone at one point in time in the past. He was trapped in a trap neuter and return operation. Unfortunately, he had too many ailments to continue, and he was put down. The two key points that I promised you I would follow up on, he was underweight, and he was underweight, and he was dehydrated. Now, those conditions will either cause and/or exacerbate any medical conditions. Unfortunately, the cats that are lost in Gilbert, and I have to tell you sadly, there are quite a few. Now, some of those are abandoned, but many of them are lost. They have the hardest time, because when they're out on Gilbert property, town property, parks, and around town, they were accustomed at one point to getting fed, you know, on a regular basis. Someone was looking after them. So when they find themselves in a place, a strange place, where there is no reliable source of food or water, it can be a very difficult situation. Currently, I'm working, trying to rescue two lost cats. And the reason we know they're lost is because in some cases, they're actually wearing the collar that they used to wear or still wearing. But it takes a while to get them to socialize with strangers like me and try and reconnect them with their households. So the message I would say for everyone in Gilbert, if you have a cat, if you have a pet, get it microchipped. The collar is good, but it's not as good as a microchip. Unfortunately, cats get separated from their collars, and then it's impossible to, impossible, almost impossible, to reconnect them with their former owners. That's my message for tonight. My point in being here is to give the council information that will hopefully cause you to reconsider and revise ordinance 2664. I thank you for your attention. Good night.
Thank you, Paul. We do move to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. There'll be two items that will be pulled tonight, Items 10 and 14. So I move that we approve Agendas Items 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21. And then I would like to move Agenda Item 30 to consent. And I will make a motion that we approve the appointment of board members to the Parks and Rec Board, Rebecca Hill, Ben Clockman, Stanley Williams, as regular members with a term as beginning May 13th, 2019, and ending May 12th, 2022. And approve Lindsay Shrewsbury as regular member to complete the remaining of a term beginning May 2nd, 2019, and ending May 12th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 10.
And that would be Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, certainly support the project here. Would like to see a local source of funding for those following CBD funds or identified for this. I've voiced my concerns with that before, not going to repeat that, but would just like to vote separately. Thank you, Mayor.
Understood. Do we have a motion on Agenda Item 10?
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 10.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. That moves us to Agenda Item 14.
That would be Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments on this one. For those of us who've been on the council for a number of years, we remember that in 2014, we changed the policy for credit card fees, and we added a fee for those who were using credit cards to help offset the cost. And the idea was for it to be cost-neutral, and so it was an extra benefit for the end user, but they would pay for that benefit, which I think we all agreed on. Since that time, a number of legal rulings have been made where we are limited to how much we can add on as a service fee for this. And that's why we have a deficit here, where we're having to help cover the costs of this. And at this point, there's nothing we can do tonight. With that being said, I am going to pass down a council future Agenda Item request to allow staff to look at raising the fee again to help make this cost-neutral again so that the town isn't having to add to the deficit that's happening when people use credit cards. So that's just a little background on this. And hopefully, going forward, we'll be able to make this a cost-neutral thing again, so the town's not picking up the tab. And we're also working with the two of the biggest home builders who have been using this and doing nothing wrong by any means, but hopefully, we can get them to switch the way that they pay, and that will resolve this as well. And with that, Mayor, I move to approve the Agenda item.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That does complete the consent agenda tonight and moves us to our public hearing. Are there any items that our council wishes to discuss under public hearing?
26, please.
22 and 23.
All right, with that, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 24, 25, 27, and 28. I will close the public hearing on those Agenda items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items 24, 25, 27, and 28. Second. Mayor, point of order. Don't we have to be in a special session for 28?
Oh, yeah, you're right. 27 and 28. Okay. I apologize. We'll just open the public hearing on Agenda Items 24 and 25 and close the public hearing on those Agenda items, and now I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve Agenda Items 24 and 25. Second.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Let's hold off on the rest of those, then, on 27 and 28. We will move, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 22.
Just a quick question for staff on this item. Have a staff member. David, could you explain our thinking about going above the appraised value on this, in the settlement?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Anderson, and members of the council. This property is one that has been, there's been a lot of negotiations back and forth on this. The property is located in Maricopa County. They're looking at annexing into the town and then developing this parcel from the single-family home that it currently is into a commercial use. In going through the negotiations with this property owner, there have been multiple rounds of it, and they have come forward with counter proposals that we have countered back and forth a number of times. And we've come to, they came to a place where they're willing to accept the number that we've presented to you. It is above the appraised value. We've presented that to you as an administrative amount for you to consider. The reason we have asked you to consider that is that the time and the additional cost of going through the condemnation process, if we need to do so, if it's not a friendly acquisition, is going to be much more than that administrative settlement portion that we've asked for. So again, it is above the appraised valuation. This is one that we've been working with that property owner very diligently, and this is the place that they have, we've not been able to get it any closer to that appraised amount. So we brought it to you at this time in this situation.
Additional questions, Councilmember Anderson?
No, not at this time.
Vice Mayor?
David, is this the property on the west side of Gilbert Road? I can't remember, I mean, excuse me, Lindsey Road?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Cook, no, this is actually on the southeast corner of Lexington and Lindsey Road. The home, it's a single-family home there that has that mural upon that wall, and it was something that, there's been a lot of issues that were kind of sticking points with this. And the administrative settlement amount is quite a bit less than what we'd be spending if we had to condemn.
I have one follow-up. Council for Chris. What are your thoughts about any kind of a precedent setting with going above appraised value on something like this?
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Anderson, I don't have any concerns over something like this, especially where we've got timing concerns. If we were to go to the county, it would take, it would delay the project.
Delay the project.
Each project's different, sorry. Negotiations are also different, so no, I don't.
If there are no additional questions, I'll close the public hearing on Agenda Item 22 and entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you, and thank you, David, and Chris, and John, and all your work on that. I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item 23. Councilmember Anderson?
Quick question for Nancy, I believe you wrote this.
We know you know this inside and out, but if you need to phone a friend, i.e. Chief Silver.
I did, I said chief.
Yes, Councilmember Anderson?
Hopefully, this will be very quick. I just noticed at the end of this, we struck out a lot of language that seemed to provide some safety. What was the thinking on that and striking that out and not leaving it in?
Specifically, sorry, Mayor Daniels and Councilmember Anderson, specifically the helmet, the closed-toe shoes, that portion, and the eyeglasses? So when we did the micro-mobility, we did not put that in. And so this is cleaning up some of the remaining policies, ordinances regarding those same topics. It's not in the bikes. We didn't put in the micro-mobility, and it was an oversight on us the last time we came to you to not remove it at that time. And so there's two, our main school of thought is this. With the, we want people to wear shoes. We want people to wear helmets. We want them to wear goggles if necessary. But I want people to make, as parents and as adults, to make that decision for yourselves and for your kids and not have the police department enforcing those rules. And the other piece of that is when you read the changes, it only, it's very specific to, sorry.
Motorized play vehicles?
Yes. To the motorized skateboards and motorized play vehicles. And motorized play vehicles, we were struggling to find an example to give you of what a motorized play vehicle is. The best example is it's everything that's not already identified or defined, because hoverboards and skateboards and everything else is defined and categorized elsewhere. So it's kind of a catch-all. So striking these rules has a very minimal effect. Really, what it would affect is the motorized skateboards. But our thinking in doing that is if, say, a 10-year-old's riding a motorized skateboard, we're not going to cite that person. Now, we'll do some education, and we can do it with or without an ordinance of, hey, you're kind of driving crazy on the roadway or on the sidewalks. It's probably best to have a helmet. But we wanted to get us out of the parenting side, let the parents take care of that, and leave it up to the decision of the riders.
Nancy, do we have any liability?
I would say that the liability, I mean, if there's any type of liability would be the standard liability, but by using the devices, it's assumption of the risk for the users, for the parents, and so forth, so, yeah.
The e-scooters, what is that going to be classified as? Are they required to wear any of that safety devices?
No. Mayor and Vice Mayor Cook, it was not included in the micro-mobility, which included the definitions for the electric scooters, both for the pilot program and for the ordinance. It is not required. There are, under user agreements, additional requirements that the company puts on the user in the agreement when they use their app and their devices. But for our ordinance, they're not in bikes. So the safety requirements we're talking about are not applicable to bikes, skateboards, micro-mobility devices, e-scooters, electronic skateboards, basically everything we're considering. It would, this is the last piece that was not either added or removed from that prior.
And I think, you know, I agree with Councilmember Anderson. One of the things that I feel that's important for parents, and I appreciate you saying that the ownership should go back to the parents, is that for parents, they like these types of, we'll call it, ordinances or bills or laws only because it helps enforce the parent by saying, you know, to my child, you can't do that because there is actually a law against that. And so I know for parents, they like to have that type of support for that, because what I would come back and say to you is, why do we have a curfew? Because you're basically saying at that point, you know, for minors, you know, that's really the responsibility of parents to take and keep track of where your kids are at night. Why not remove curfew hours as well? So again, to me, I'm just trying to figure out the consistency behind what you just said versus what we already have on the books, because that means I might want to go back and look at all of these things that parents are responsible for and so forth. But again, I understand the positioning. I understand the difficulties of trying to enforce these things, your team and the amount of individuals that go do this. I do have a second point that I want to add. The second point, I talked to the chief and Nancy about it, and I think this is more giving direction to the team. I do feel very strongly that there should be some language very similar to the city of Scottsdale related to riding the e-scooters impaired due to alcohol or substance. And I know that your folks are looking at it. I just want to see if the council would agree to give that direction to the team, that they look at language that gives them the ability to basically do DUI on those types of vehicles and so forth.
Do we already have something to that effect?
Not in the existing ordinance, but we are drafting. We looked at Scottsdale, and it's a pretty model policy to follow. So we are in the process of reviewing that, and we can come back with some recommendations regarding that.
Thank you. Any other additional questions?
I have just one comment about the parental. My kids actually were riding their bikes home from school, maybe, or two ago, and had their helmets on, and an office and had their helmets on, and an officer stopped and gave them a free Slurpee coupon to 7-Eleven. So there was some, like, positive reinforcement. The kids who had helmets got the coupon, and the kids who didn't, didn't get one. And so I thought that that was, that's a great opportunity for us to do some community policing and encourage good behavior. I will also add, though, that I don't tell my kids to be home because of curfew. I tell my kids to be home because it's a reasonable time for them to be home, given their ages. And so I think as parents, we get to step up a little bit and make those determinations, and, you know, of course, they go outside of that curfew time on occasion, if there's a special circumstance. And I want that flexibility as a parent, and I think that we have that here in the town of Gilbert. So I'm grateful for the ordinances that we have in place, because I do think that they make a difference. I like this one, and I'm grateful for the work that you guys did. Any other comments or questions?
All right, I'll close the public hearing on Agenda Item 23, is that right? And entertain a motion.
Mayor, I want to also appreciate the good work the police department did. I do support the comments of the chief, and would like to move to approve. Item 23 is published in the public documents before us.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. All right, we will recess our regular meeting and reconvene in special meeting for Agenda Items 27 and 28.
Mayor.
I will open the pu-
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on 26. Geez, you guys, I promise, I should drink more caffeine before I come to council meeting. Agenda Item 26, I will open the public hearing on that agenda item.
Okay, okay. Capital Improvement Plan. Mayor, a couple of concerns that I have on this one. There's some spending plans in here that, you know, I've spoken about a lot. I'm not going to repeat the arguments on it, I will call them out. I think we do have too much contemplated spending on things like public safety, training facilities specifically, the Cactus Yards plan. I've outlined my concerns on that in prior. But I think the other thing that's a little bit concerning, you know, when we publish this document, we're sending a signal to the community that we're planning on these things. And there's some things in here that we haven't really had a lot of good discussion on, if any, such as a soccer complex, a public cultural education center. I mean, and these are not small things, I mean, we're talking 80, $90 million projects. There's two parks bonds, probably upwards in the $250, 250, I wish it was 250 million dollars combined. We haven't really talked about those, so to put it in a document that says that we're getting serious about these, I think is probably confusing to the public. And so some of those items can be cleaned up, happy to support it. There's been a tremendous amount of work here, and I think a lot of the illustrations are very helpful to the public, but I would hate to confuse them with things that we haven't really talked and vetted about. So those are my thoughts on CIP tonight. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any other comments on Agenda Item 26? Vice Mayor?
And I just want to highlight, you know, the items that Councilmember Taylor mentioned are what we call the beyond the 10-year mark. So obviously, those are really, I agree, future discussions that we can have. Those are not on, you know, next year's budget to go after, but I think over time, we'll probably have staff, you know, provide updates and allow that discussion, maybe at retreats or something.
I think I'll add to that. At one point, there was an aquatic, an additional aquatic center that was in this plan, and we had a council discussion and put it in there. So we do have the ability and authority to have those conversations, and of course, include the stakeholders, our residents and town team when we make those decisions. So I'm grateful that we continue to always monitor what's most important to the community, and we do that on a very regular basis, so that's helpful. Any other comments?
I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 26 and entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote, thank you. Okay, I'm really excited about this, apparently. We're going to recess the regular meeting and reconvene in special meeting, and I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 27 and 28. Comments from council? Right, I will.
Sorry, was there no presentation?
We can, if you need one.
I don't need one.
Okay.
Ready to talk about the budget?
Hit it.
Okay. Mayor, thank you for some time. I do have, I know we had a study session planned, and we had a healthy 30 seconds or so of discussion on that. I know we want to talk a lot about this, because we owe it to our taxpayers to be good stewards. We owe it to them to have a good, responsible plan, you know, as their elected officials. You know, this will be the first time that we'd have, we have a budget that's a billion dollars, which is a big deal. And so, you know, this is probably one of the most important things that we do as a council, and to have it, you know, in a condition that's reflective of the current economic climates and the challenges that we face, and to have it be clear is very, very important. And there's some issues here that I've talked about in the past, they continue to persist in here, I'll highlight them again. During the financial retreat towards the end, we, well, during the financial retreat, we had a lot of presentations on new spending. And at the end, and I wanted to listen and just really understand what those are, and have some time to think about it. At the end, I certainly expressed my sentiments that, you know, to the extent that we can find savings to add some of those spendings in there, that would be a responsible thing. If we just add them on top to current spending, I'm not sure if that's something that I would be able to support, you know, from my standpoint. But let me just outline the concerns that I have with the budget as presented here today. Love to hear the other thoughts of council, and certainly appreciate the time that council has put in here. But number one, there's, it still sustains some spending that I voted against in the past, and do not think that we should be carrying some of that forward. I've expressed some concerns on, you know, the unsustainable nature of the Cactus League's business model. It's a structural loss of a million dollars, best-case scenario. Nobody in their right mind would go into an operation knowing that, at best case, you're going to be losing, you know, a million dollars. There's some other headcount that I've opposed in the past. I do think we have too much administrative headcount, I'm not going to go into specifics on those, but I do think we need to, you know, really take a look at that. And I do appreciate, and Patrick knows that, I ask him all the time how our lean Six Sigma programs are going, and how can we target efficiency, and I appreciate his continually updating me on that, but I just haven't seen that we have been able to carve out on an material basis, you know, the spending that we can. So that's number one, is the carrying forward of some spending that we shouldn't be doing right now. Number two, it does add some additional unnecessary spending on top of what's carrying forward. Again, with some of the headcount that's come in, and Patrick and I, again, had a good discussion, given him feedback on some various ideas. Appreciate some of the things that have come forward that we approved tonight with the police department and the overtime, I think that was a great thing. So I'm not saying that there hasn't been good work, but there really is a lot of headcount that we're adding that I think is tied to spending that is not wise. How do we know? Well, we know because BLD proved it, okay? And there's some other things that are really going to be a drag when the economy rolls over, and we'll touch on that in a minute. Number two, it also contemplates a tax increase, which I know we're going to talk about, and that's not something that, you know, I'm going to support. My position has always been that we keep it as or, you know, reduce that. I made that promise to the voters when I ran, and I intend to keep that. Number four, I'm not sure that it accurately illustrates what we're going to spend. Every year, Eddie gives us a chart and makes comments relative to the amount of spending that we're going to have relative to what we're committing to in the budget, and there's always hundreds of millions of dollars difference. I think we need to be as precise as we reasonably can, and I'm not saying down to the penny or the nickel, right? That's impossible to do, but when we're a hundred, a couple hundred million dollars off, and we know that, I'm not sure that that's the best budget going out. We should really tighten that up, and if we know we're not going to spend, we don't really need to authorize that level of spending. The famous bread chart, I don't have that here tonight, maybe it'll come back in the next session or not. But that was a very important analysis, and I think that Victor added some great value to our discussion. And what he was trying to illustrate, and I did look at the numbers for this particular year, is the burden we're putting on our residents, the taxpayers, the ones paying for our services, pacing inflation. And the bread chart shows that it's not. It's drastically outpacing inflation, so that's the whole point of the bread, right? Bread's getting more expensive, inflation's going up, and our services should pace at least to that. Now, if we truly were efficient, and we know that efficiency can, in fact, the Department of Labor came out, 3.6% productivity increase came out in non-farm labor. You can look at those reports that came out today. So it's happening in the U.S., but our efficiency is going down, and that's what that chart shows empirically, and it's really from staff's own data, pulling out all the one-time things. So the other thing that we need to remember with our basic economics is that when you do have inflation, the value of your dollar decreases, your purchasing power goes down. So if we're asking more in a tax increase, and we're putting more burden on them without truly adding more lines of service, that's very regressive to the average household, and I think we really need to seriously consider what we're doing. Because inflation means your purchasing power goes down, that's the definition of it. Number six, we talked about the economics, and so we'll just transition into that. You know, the FOMC came out today, and they held rates steady. They would like to raise rates, right? We know that the current low level of interest rates is hurting spending. It's hurting people's spending accounts. And they want to raise them, but they can't, they won't. They tried to last year, and when the economy, you know, dropped 30%, man, they snapped back so fast and came out, completely reversed their position, and markets responded positively, but they're keeping rates low. Why? Well, they know that we're not, you know, we're long in the tooth, you know, in this bull run, right? There's lots of forecasts that things are going to roll over and turn down. So for us to add $80 million in new spending with rising interest rates, we're outpacing inflation, with decreasing, you know, purchasing power, yeah, can we last a year with, when the economy rolls over? We probably can, and I believe staff, when they say that, that we can. But what we learned in the past is that it's going to take some serious pain and some serious cuts and some serious decisions. And that decision is, are we going to raise a bunch of taxes, or are we going to make a lot of cuts? We know what the, we know what the town of Gilbert wants us to do, and I think we need to have a budget that does reflect what they're going to want us to do, and not put our town and our town staff and employees in a position where we're going to have to make some drastic cuts if we do see another recession roll over. And there's some forecasts that say, and I'm trying not to, you know, be the doomsayer on it, but I'm just saying that when we're increasing spending in with the headwinds of the economy right now, it may not be the wisest thing to do. Mayor, I'd like us to hear what other people's thoughts are on that. I absolutely agree with a lot of the commitments that we made in this budget to improving some of the park systems and the streets, supporting strong public safety as well. There's some absolutely positive things in that way. Certainly love to see more of a commitment to shade, but that's a very small thing. I think it would absolutely benefit our residents, and was disappointed to see that we didn't have more of a commitment. But I understand that they want to do a shade master plan, so maybe there's hope. Yeah, I know, a shade master plan, imagine that, we've arrived once we have that. So Mayor, thank you again for the time, and I'm looking forward to hearing other people's thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, thanks. Kelly, if I can borrow you for a bit here. If you could do me a favor and pull up in our packet the page, which is basically called the expense summary for fiscal year 2019-2020, and it basically starts off with the general fund for me, please. And I usually don't talk a lot about the general fund, but I think, you know, this year, I'll spend a little bit talking about the numbers here.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cook, I wasn't expecting that document, so I think I've got the right one, but you're looking for expense?
Yeah, so we're going to look at the expense summary. If you could, halfway down at the page is basically the total general fund expenditure line of that page. That's it. If, and maybe with that, you can highlight with your cursor the area. So last year, we as a council, at least a majority of the council, adopted overall in the budget. So if you see in the third column, it says the adopted 2018-2019 budget, and it's about, for general fund, it was 173. Now, if you look over to the right column, column four, I asked Kelly if we can look at maybe what the projected for, would it be for the rest of this year? Is that an assumption? I can't remember. But you'll see it's 156 million. So even though we adopted 173, and I know I've talked about this, and we'll show some of the graphs later, you'll see that the projected is going to be 156. So again, we obviously are not spending more than what we adopted. That's all I wanted to highlight there. But if you look at column one and column two, let's go to column two. That was the previous fiscal year, and you'll see that the general fund expenditure was 158 million. And we're projecting to spend this fiscal year about $2 million less. And then if you look at the prior fiscal year for fiscal year 17, that was 160 million in the general fund. And again, now, two consecutive years, we've actually spent less in the general fund. So again, I just wanted to share that information there. If you could do me a favor and maybe pull up some of my favorite graphs there. And I think what I like to see is the one graph that is basically showing the, I'm looking for the actual, well, here's a good graph. So this graph is over, you know, pretty much when Mayor Daniels came on board. And again, this is just because we're the ones that were, you know, started to vote on these budgets. Kelly, why don't you explain what this graph is?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cook, certainly. So this is a representation of the budget and the actual expenditures over the period of time. The budgeted expenditures are grayed out so that you can see the comparison, that our budgeted expenditures are always coming in lower. And this is both per capita, so per citizen, and inflation-adjusted. So you would expect if spending were to be very stable, that the bars would be the same across the bottom. So you can see that they are fairly flat. Most of the volatility is in the lighter blue or green areas, which are our debt and refundings, when we refinance debt, and then in our capital expenditures. But our basic expenditures of personnel and contract are quite similar per capita, inflation-adjusted over that period of time.
And I think what's nice about this graph is that I asked Kelly if she could put in the projected 2019 numbers. And what I wanted to share with the council, this fiscal year, we've actually, we'll spend overall, that includes the general fund and the enterprise fund, less than we did last fiscal year.
fund, less than we did last fiscal year. And I think it's about maybe between 20 and 40 million dollars less, I think. But I, I mean, it's fantastic that, as you talk about, um, business efficiencies, being fiscally responsible with the taxpayer dollars, this is probably one of the first times that, um, you can see here that we're actually, this coming fiscal year, spent less, and substantially less than what we adopted in the adopted budget from last year. So I just wanted to share that with the council. Um, if you can do another slide, ones that basically talked about all expenditures per capita with the trend lines. So this is the one graph I brought last year that was just kind of showing, um, trending based upon the actual total expenditures that we're spending versus per capita. And the graph really is really trying to show, in my opinion, that the way we're spending is not exceeding, you know, any number based upon our population in Gilbert. So the trend lines are somewhat parallel, but again, this is the overall spend of both our general fund and our, uh, our enterprise fund. And then if you go down to the next slide, uh, and this is the one that, again, highlights, the, the dark blue is really the adopted budget that the council basically had voted in favor of. But then in the green is the actual spend. So Kelly, can you actually share with the public why the numbers look like it's a billion-dollar budget, but in reality, we spend about $350 million? Because that's probably the, you know, it's very confusing for a lot. But if you could share with us, you know, the, kind of the gap or why we do what we do?
Sure, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Uh, there are several reasons for that. Some is that once we adopt, uh, tonight, what our expenditure limit is, we are not allowed to go over that expenditure by even a dollar. So we need to make sure that we have enough flexibility built into that budget that we can take advantage of opportunities that come on board, whether that's the opportunity to purchase a long-range asset, the opportunity to refinance debt. There could be a number of things. Even if we were to get grant revenue, we wouldn't be able to recognize that unless we have the expenditure authority through our contingencies already adopted. One of the other reasons is, uh, the bulk of our budget is capital improvement projects, and we make sure that we have the full amount that we need to finish that project before we start and do contracts on that. And these are multi-year projects, so it means that we'll have that money and carry, carry it forward from year to year until we finish those projects. But we want to make sure that we have it fully there to, to finish before we start.
And I know all of us, you know, we're stewards of our taxpayer dollars, and, you know, we work hard to, from the council perspective, to understand these numbers. But, you know, I would say, you know, even this fiscal year as we end it, we probably have been, um, you know, better in managing the money than, than ever. And again, Patrick, to your team, you know, thank you very much for, for doing that. Um, I feel very comfortable, you know, from the data that has been shared to us, being able to present it in this form, that, you know, we, I, as I would say, um, we're, we're the best well-run, you know, community here in the state of Arizona. And I'm just overly thrilled by, you know, the team effort that we have in, as it relates to what we spend, the priority of things that we spend. And again, very, very happy, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is my first budget season, so still very much a student of this. And, um, there's some areas that I, I know I'm going to have to meet with some staff members and do some one-on-ones over the, um, between now and when we adopt a final budget. Um, I do have, I'm doing some of my own personal due diligence, but do look forward to meeting some of our team members and digging down into some of the other details I'm, I'm not so privy to. Um, that being said, I, I do have concerns as well as some things I see here and here that I'm very excited about, and echo a lot of the sentiments that Councilwoman Taylor's, uh, mentioned. I will, I would like to highlight a couple of things that I think are very positive. I've, I do think that, um, you know, from what we've been spending on debt in the last few years, we've obviously significantly reduced that. I do think that, uh, some of that is going to free up, and obviously, the council makes some decisions about incurring additional debt on top of that. Um, but I, I do think that's a, that's a positive trend. Also, uh, I, you know, how we're figuring our revenues for sales tax and keeping those consistent and being very conservative about those projections, I think is wise. Um, so what I, what I offer as far as feedback is, is not criticism, it's merely input for consideration, and, and I offer it humbly. So, um, I do echo some of the concerns about increases in spending, especially because I, I do believe our economy is, is soft and has some underlying, uh, health issues. And I, um, you know, was reading some Forbes articles today that, you know, are a little bit grim, and whether that's a year from now, um, I, I don't think necessarily 12 months of the cycle that we're going to be seeing, but I do, I do think it's, um, definitely impending. And in an abundance of caution, I think it, I think it's wise to, to kind of handle in two ways. And one is obviously, um, taking on as little debt as possible. My husband and I are students of Dave Ramsey, so big fans of, of his stewardship and his practices, and, and not big fans of debt. And so, um, especially when, when recession hits, that's, that's where, that's where we're going to feel the pain, is if we've incurred a lot of that. And so, um, secondarily, um, I think at our, uh, financial retreat, it was discussed that, you know, we, we want to maybe look at some ways to diversify revenue streams. And, um, for me, that, that, when I hear diversified revenue streams, especially when I look at the makeup of the town of Gilbert, that for me screams a primary property tax. And so, um, what I don't want to see is, um, our resident, I, I like having distinguished, not having a primary property tax, one of the few cities, um, in Arizona. I think that's a badge of honor. And so I think ways that we can kind of hedge that is, is loan-arying spending, hedging spending, as well as not incurring debt. So I, I offer that as, as just general feedback. Um, I also just want to make the point that, um, on top of I, what I think is an impending recession, um, I look to our elected leaders and policymakers at a state level. And, and I don't foresee, if history is any indication, them necessarily taking the most prudent financial budget going forward from a state level, which obviously has trickle-down effects for, for local jurisdictions. And so I think it's our responsibility to be as cautious as possible on the front end, because when it comes to whatever that next downturn looks like, and to the gravity of what it, what it will be, um, we're, we're going to have to be the grown-ups in the room, so to speak, because, uh, the, uh, what they've projected in this past budget, as well as what I think the discussions are, are trending toward for this year, and then '21 and '22, is a, is a very slim structural balance, which if there is any con, uh, constriction in what, uh, the economy does, um, we're, we're looking at some pretty big issues at the state level. And that, and that definitely trickles down to us. I'll just mention, uh, you know, one other thing, and that's, it's not a, it's not a large amount, it's only $100,000. But, um, you know, we, we are members, and we do support the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. And I, although I think there's probably an argument to be made that, you know, that's not wasteful, that, you know, we get representation, um, I do think that, uh, a lot of the positions that they take and the policies that they support on a state level are damaging to taxpayers. And, um, and so even though we get a certain amount of, maybe, you know, they might go down there, and they might advocate for new taxes that will benefit our bottom line and our budget, and I don't think that's good for the taxpayer. And so, um, that would be something I'd love to bring up in the future and have a discussion about as from a policy standpoint. So, and so those are my thoughts, and thanks for letting me be a part of the process.
I do want to say thank you to staff for your efforts to Kelly and her team. Um, one of the things I really appreciate is the transparency and the openness, and the willingness to spend unlimited amounts of time. I am confident that you guys have spent less time with council this year since our good friend Victor is no longer here. But I, I hopefully you've had a little bit, uh, easier time this year. But in all seriousness, thank you for your time and your willingness to answer question after question from each one of us. Uh, I'm sure some questions are not as intelligent of questions as others that, that we ask you. Um, and I would, to the, to the public, I would invite you to ask questions as well, of your council members, of town staff. Um, I know that Kelly, I know that other members of management at all different groups and departments in the town, uh, are, are very well-known to meet with residents and meet with groups and talk with them. And so I open that invitation to everybody who has questions or concerns. Um, and, and although the council members oftentimes may not have the answer to every question that's asked, we can almost always find the person who has that answer, and would love to, um, share that same transparency with all the residents of Gilbert. But thank you to Kelly and her team for their efforts. Uh, it, it makes our job as council members much easier to have so much information available to us. So thank you.
Just a couple of comments. A question from Kelly. Um, could you review our revenue projections that have, over the last few years? How they've grown?
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, certainly. Uh, our revenues are mostly based in the general fund on sales tax. And we have had very strong growth in Gilbert. I think this is our sixth year in a row of 8% year-over-year increases in our sales tax revenue. Um, so we're very excited about that, the strength of our business community that that represents. In the upcoming budget, we're projecting it to be flat, just to be very conservative. We hope that we get another 8%, and that we're able to use that for one-time, um, projects in fiscal '21.
So even with that projection of more flat, we're still okay with what you projected for the budget for next year?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. The only thing I, I want to point out is, I too am very concerned with all of the, the thoughts behind whether or not the economy's going to slow down and how that might affect us locally. And I think about that a lot. And then I hear that our GMP the last quarter was 3.2%, which was not projected to, to be above 2%. I, I don't know when things may roll over, but right now I see that we have a very strong economy. And I think that gives us the ability to meet the needs of the community. I know that Kelly doesn't like debt, and we're doing all, and I know Patrick doesn't like debt, and we're doing all that we can to address that. And I think that this budget and future budgets will address that. And, um, I, I agree that we are financially one of the, the best-run communities in the state. Um, that is, and I know that because I, I have sat down and talked with the staff about some of the issues that, that, uh, been brought up tonight, and, and other issues also. But I have full confidence in, in going forward with where we're at with this budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Kelly and our former, um, budget director, Dawn, taught me well that the preliminary budget is more important than the actual budget that we vote on in June. So I have taken that to heart, and I've done my homework, and I applaud Kelly for all of the questions that she takes. And I even prefaced the one that I sent her today with, "I think I ask you this every single year, but the minute budget is over, I forget it." And so then I have to come back to you again and re-ask the question. And I appreciate that you're always there to answer those questions for us. And like Councilmember Ray said, um, we're here and available to answer your questions. And, um, sometimes the terminology may not make sense to people that they read in our budgets, and sometimes it's easier just to reach out to us. And in that case, I wasn't even sure about some of that terminology, so I had to double-check with Kelly. These documents are long, they are intense, they cover more than one person can handle. Kelly has a team, they all work together to handle all of this work. And we, that's why we meet with you so much. I think that a day doesn't go by that I don't think about money or budget in this community in some fashion, because it is just what we do and how we do it here in Gilbert. And we take the time to do a financial retreat every year so that we can specifically talk about just financial stuff, and how it's going to affect us in the future, and where those funds are going to come from potentially, and what are the priorities for us and for our residents. And those change. And that's why that rolling CIP list is very important to us also. I missed that stakeholders group this year, and I apologize for that. I, I, I need to catch up with all of you on that. Um, I want to thank you all for the work that you do. I think as the fourth-largest town, city in Arizona, that you do remarkable work with what we have, and I appreciate all of you. And I will be supporting this budget tonight.
Thank you to the entire council. I know lots of hours have gone into preparing for this evening's discussion, and I appreciate, um, each and every one of you and what you bring to the conversation, the dialogue. I wanted to just make two comments, um, final comments. Um, the first is to address the primary property tax, um, I think that Councilmember Brinton has brought up. And, um, I just, in all of my years here, um, as part of council, um, not, particularly of our current council, um, I don't think there's a single advocate on this council for a primary property tax. And so I, I want to assure our residents that if that's what you heard, um, that absolutely would not be the direction that this council would take. And I just wanted to be really clear about that. Um, I have never advocated for a tax increase, and I won't advocate for a tax increase. We've been working really hard to ensure that, um, we don't put ourselves in a position, uh, for that type of, of change to our community. Um, the other, uh, statement that was made tonight that I just wanted to be really clear on is that, um, I think it was Councilmember Taylor who brought up $80 million in new spending. That's, that's absolutely not the case when you look at the actual budget. And one of the things that I really love about the way that we do budget here in the town of Gilbert, it's different than any other municipality. And I, I, um, I would hope that they would follow suit with our process, because we are extremely transparent. There are a lot of things we could leave out of the conversation as it relates to our budget, things like transfers, um, things like, um, you know, interdepartmental spending, um, things like the carryforward from CIP projects. Um, we could leave all that out of the budget and still have, um, a really sound financial budget. But we don't do that in Gilbert, because we want our residents to see every single dollar. Um, we want to be really clear about what we're doing with your money, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. Um, we don't want there to be any, any secrets. We want there to be full transparency in what we do. And that's primarily, I believe, the foundation of trust that we have between government and our residents. And I'm always looking to improve that. Um, and so I think that our very transparent budget is the key to that. Um, there is not $80 million in new spending in this budget. We could very easily get this under $1 billion if we took off all of the transfers and things like that, like frankly, a lot of our neighboring municipalities do. Um, but we don't do that, because we're not just focused on the dollar amount. Um, we are absolutely focused on the vision for this community, and I think that's a key part. Um, thank you, Councilmember Anderson, for bringing up the projections. While we've had 8% year-over-year growth in our revenues over years, many years, um, we have projected 4%. And I think that that is a conservative approach. Um, and I, again, am very proud of that. I'm also aging myself, that I was the council member who sat on this dais when we cut $15 million from our budget in 2000, um, fiscal, for fiscal year 2010. And while that was an arduous process, and we got a lot of community support as we did that, um, I have no doubt that if we needed to change some of our priorities, that that would be reflected in the budget as well. And, and that's what we would do. I know that this council would do that if we ended up in a economic downturn, um, such as that we saw in 2009 and 2010. So I just wanted to highlight that. I, there are four things that I absolutely love about this budget. We are prioritizing. We are agile. We can respond to things that Kelly mentioned earlier, which is the refinance to save millions of dollars of debt service, um, and interest for our residents. I love the fact that it is very strategic. It's focusing on, um, really the things that the residents have told us are important to them, and we're focused on those things as well. And I do believe that this is a fiscally responsible budget. I am, um, continually impressed at the effort that goes into creating this budget, and the depth and the knowledge that our employees and team members have for the service levels that they're providing. Again, it's what we're doing it, what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. And those are all really important components of this budget. So thank you, and thank you to the entire town council for working so hard on this. I will close the public--
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I just respond to that? Can I just respond to that, since you addressed some of the points?
Just one of yours, yeah.
Yeah. So, let me read from the packet where I got the $80 million. So, under financial impact, here's what staff has published under this. The proposed maximum budget of $1,484,521 is an increase of about $80 million from fiscal 2019. So, staff says we're contemplating more than, about $80 million. And then they break it out, Mayor. They say it reflects an increase of $55 million in capital improvement projects, $12 million of new personnel, and operating requests, and so on and so forth. So, the $80 million that I mentioned was staff's own words. And to my previous point is, if we don't intend on spending that, we shouldn't put it in there.
So, we shouldn't show all the transfers? We shouldn't show the contingency funds? You're saying that we shouldn't show repair and replacement funds? We shouldn't, is that, is that the direction that you're giving, is not to show those dollars?
No, those are, that's the words you're putting in my mouth. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is--
I'm trying to understand.
What I'm saying is, to the point that Eddie made earlier, is if we're not planning on spending it, let's not put it in here. Let's put in here what, and tell the taxpayers what we're really actually spending. We need to show those, you know, we need to show some of those over. But there is a big increase in spending that's outlined in here, and it's not inappropriate to just use the words that are published in town documents. And as Eddie's charts show, we have so much more than we're actually going to spend. And like you, like you said, I agree with you. We could cut that out because we know we're not going to spend it. So, why are we putting it in there? That's really the point I'm making, but I'm just using staff's own words on $80 million as they break it out in the public documents.
And I can appreciate that, but I would like to go back to the definition of a budget. The definition of a budget is a financial plan. It may include planned volumes and revenues, or revenues and expenses. It may also include budget surplus or providing money for use at a future time, or if there is a deficit in which expenses exceed income. Obviously, that's not what we're projecting or planning, but the definition of budget is not just your revenues and your expenditures. It's also, as a whole, the financial plan that we've assembled for the entire community, which we want the flexibility to say could include refinancing of debt. You've applauded those efforts where we've been able to refinance debt. We have to have flexibility within this budget, otherwise we wouldn't have the opportunity to refinance debt, which means we're paying from our reserve funds, we're paying that debt off, and then assuming at a lower rate, which is awesome if and when we can do that. If we don't have flexibility, the ability to be agile in our budget, we miss out on those opportunities. So, that's why I'm in favor of, again, being as transparent as we can through these documents. We recognize and point out on a very regular basis the things that we, you know, when we can and are under budget. But last year, Kelly found an opportunity for us to pay down additional public safety retirement debt, and we were able to do that because there was flexibility built into our budget. I don't want to take that flexibility away.
Mayor, thank you. Kelly, can you bring that slide up that Eddie talked about? One, just one. I'm not going to go through more than one.
Kelly, while you're pulling that up, I'm going to ask, oh, okay. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, you're going to have to give me a little bit more breadcrumb. Which one in particular?
It's not the one with the ghosts, the ghosting, it's a bar chart that shows what the slack is.
I think it's the one that shows the actual versus--
Actual versus--
Actual versus the adopted.
Yeah, thank you, Eddie.
The big blue gap, one.
Right. And while she's putting that up, Mayor, you're really parsing two things here. What, you know, this chart will show, and two is, when staff says we have an increase of spending in the documents, and I state that as a fact, I believe staff's saying that, and they are increasing spending if presumably these documents have accurate numbers. So, I think we can still, I think we can still support what's in the documents here, because they're saying in the public documents that they're increasing spending, and they break it right out, right? They're under the financial impact. So, I don't think it's accurate to say that we're not spending more because it's broken out right there to the magnitude of $80 million. Now, to the second point that you're mixing into here is, no, this, it's the other one that has the--
It's the blue and the green.
Blue and--
There we go.
Right. So, the blue is the buffer. And Mayor, you're absolutely right. We want some flexibility, we want some elbow room to be able to do that. But, I mean, what is that, like 4X, 5X of what our actual spend? So, well, maybe it's the general.
Can I make a comment, Councilmember Taylor? The thing that I love about the way that we budget this way, I get that every year we have huge amounts of money that we don't use. The benefit is, as I understand it, and Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, if we have a multi-year project, let's say we have a three-year project, and the cost of this project's $100 million, and I'm making numbers up here, it's $100 million, and we're going to spend, you know, a third of that on year one, so we're going to spend $65 million-ish on year one, and $130 million on years two and three. I love that we put it all in this year's budget. We know we're not going to spend it, but I don't want to do a project a third of the way done and not have any money available for the rest of it. And so, we have a building or a road that's half-done, and we're out of luck. I love that we budget the entire thing now. Knowing we're not going to spend it, but we have the money set aside, we will roll it over at the end of this year, the $130 million, and it will go to next year. And next year, we'll only spend half of that $130 million. And I love the fact that we're not going to have buildings that are a third of the way complete, or roads that are a third of the way complete, or a diamond interchange at Lindsay in the 202 that has two lanes one way and one lane the other way. So, I understand the idea. And I remember when I ran for council the first time, this was something that I criticized until I realized the benefit of it. And I can't think of a more conservative way to budget than put all the money aside. When I buy a car or buy something at home, I put as much aside upfront, even if I'm going to spend it all on day one, whether it's for repairs, for future gas, et cetera. And so, I get the concern of there's lots of money that we never use, but the fact that we are, in my opinion, conservatively budgeting for the future, I think it's a great way to do it. And I think when the downturn does happen, we are not all of a sudden stuck with half-done buildings or projects. We have the money set aside. And if it is appropriate to stop building at that point and use that money elsewhere, obviously, we can do so.
Councilman Ray, that's, totally respect that. I think that's great. I would prefer it the other way, but, I mean, yeah, I guess, let me just be clear that either way you do that, if you just project it to the year you're actually going to spend it, or if you load it like we're doing here, both ways complete projects, right? Both ways get projects 100% done. It, maybe it's more preference than principle. So, I appreciate the viewpoint there. Mayor, thank you for the additional time.
With any, no more additional comments. We'll close the public hearing on Agenda Items. Do we need to do 28 separate? Just 27? Close the public hearing on Agenda Item 27 and entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move we approve Agenda Item 27.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. We've already opened the public hearing on Agenda Item 28. Any comments from council?
Mayor, I'd like to keep the levy at 22.3, which is what we had this last year. I think we've talked about it all. Hopefully, we're past the word games of the rate versus, if it's not a tax increase, it doesn't have to be published as such. The town has to do that when it is a tax increase. So, hopefully, we don't have to play the word games about rate versus levy. We've had that many, many times, but--
And we have a fabulous video on our website that allows anybody to learn more about rate and levy. Okay.
We're probably the only one in the union that has a video on the tax. 22.3 is what I'd be happy to support this year.
Any other comments from--
Mayor, Kelly, can you bring up the Cook House historic property tax and levy? We'll just get a feel of--
And I share this a lot, too, as related to the public training facility bond. So, it's very, very kind of similar. Just kind of give a number for the folks. So, you know, the nice part, well, first of all, let's just say, the county assessor obviously has authority to evaluate and raise our property values, and that's really how, we'll just say, things are set for us as it relates to how we're getting taxed based upon our secondary property tax. You know, I'm in the camp of, you know, I wish there wasn't property tax at all for any of us, but, you know, the state has provided that as a vehicle, as a tool for income tax, you know, we're actually in income tax, but tax diversity for communities to collect. But what's nice, since I think even with, from Mayor Daniels' time when she's on the council, the rate obviously has been dropping constantly for all these years. So, that part I do want to share, you know, with the public. By keeping the rate the same and having the levy go to the levy that's been recommended for us to approve, the Cook family is going to see an increase to their secondary property tax of about $13. And I said this last year. So, it's literally a dollar a month more that will be used, in a sense, to help pay for the debt, especially for the public training facility, and as we move forward. So, I know it's been the goal to keep the rate the same, but we have no control of the assessor. And always, you know, I can show you the cards I get from the assessor, that every year, he maxes it out, you know? So, I have no control of that. So, but I do know that the voters did approve of these bonds, and these are voter-proof bonding that we have to pay for. And again, I just want to show that, you know, I would say the Cook home is kind of a, I would think, an average home, nothing elaborate, but it'd be just another dollar, kind of a dollar more a month by us approving this. So, I just want to give a kind of perspective of how much of an increase that would be.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Only in Gilbert is your property value increasing considered a bad thing. Only in Gilbert. Okay. I'll close the public hearing on Agenda Item 28 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 28.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I will recess our special meeting and reconvene in our regular meeting now. I think doing that is also a state law than statute that we have to do those sorts of things. So, for what we're reconvening and recessing and coming back. But here we are. Agenda Item 29, is there a motion to consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for third quarter of 2019?
So moved.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Please vote. Motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. We've already handled number 30. We'll move to 31. Any updates from our council on boards, commissions, and committees? Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Mayor and I went to Gilbert Fire and Rescue Department on Monday morning as they kicked off the accreditation process. And we met the people that were here to, the peer assessor team that were here to work with them. And this afternoon, Chief Jim Joe Bush sent us out an email letting us know that they have been recommended for accreditation, and we won't know until August officially if that happens. And I think that it will, I just emailed Chief Joe Bush back, and I said, "I think that this will probably be the longest summer of his life, waiting until August to find out if they receive that accreditation." But I feel quite confident that it will happen. I want to say congratulations and thank you to Chief Jim Joe Bush, to Assistant Chief Bob Badgett, to Elena Bay, and to Carl Grant. And I can't remember your IT person's name, Kendall? Kendall, to Kendall from IT that has done all of the work for you and all the data that you have needed and required to get through this process. Thank you for all that you do. Congratulations. And like I said, I feel very confident, I don't want to jinx anything, but I feel very confident for you.
At least they'll sleep good tonight. Yes. All right, good. Thank you. Thanks for highlighting that, Councilmember Peterson. Any other additional comments on boards, commissions, or committees? All right. We have one feature meeting, Agenda Item Request, that's already been signed. We'll turn that in. And communications from Town Manager and Current Events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A couple items tonight. First, we have our annual police memorial on Monday at 7:30 in front of the memorial in our public safety complex. We invite all of you to attend. I'd like to echo Councilmember Peterson's comments. That was an arduous couple of years of work with a lot of data analytics driving behind that, but it's going to help us improve the already excellent level of service we provide through our Gilbert Fire and Rescue Department. And I want to congratulate all those individuals that were mentioned. They did a great job. I'm very confident the governing body will approve their recommendation in August, and we look forward to all the great things to come. But they did excellent work. Want to recognize Kelly Fost, her budget analyst, and the entire team, as well as all the directors in departments that worked on the budget for this fiscal year coming up. It's a year-long process in Gilbert. As you know, it's a painstaking process. It's a very complex budget. But Kelly is an excellent leader of that effort, and I sincerely thank her for all of her great work, as always.
Made additionally challenging this year in particular with the software change that we've had within the organization. So, really monumental task that they've been able to--
Absolutely. And Hocken Johansson, our finance director and his team, were a big part of that effort. Also, we had our sixth Annual Spark App League contest today held out at the ASU Polycampus. And I wanted to thank and congratulate Dana Birchman, Derek Konofsky, Melissa Cannon, and the rest of our Gilbert digital team. We had over 300 kids there today, kids as young as in 4th grade, all the way up to 12th grade, working on games. The theme for this year was City of the Future in recognition of our effort to create long-term sustainability of our quality of life here in Gilbert. It was a wonderful event, and I also want to thank our sponsors, ASU Fulton School of Engineering, WAMO, and Deloitte for their sponsorship. And they sent out a ton of mentors to help work with those kids. It was just a wonderful time. And then lastly, want to recognize Amanda Elliott on our Economic Development Team. She received her Arizona Economic Development Professionals designation from the Arizona Association for Economic Development. She does excellent work for her, and we congratulate her on that recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that Spark App League today was pretty awesome. Their shirts all said Hack to the Future. Get it? Dan, I thought that was cool. All right. Any comments from council and current events? Councilmember Ray?
Two things, Mayor. One, want to say thank you to Gilbert Fire for their April Pools Day this last week at Mesquite Junior High. There were over 500 people there. It is bigger and bigger every year. Amazing sponsors. Kohl's had a huge team of people out there. But I was especially grateful for the many firefighters who showed up on their off days to volunteer, and kids absolutely love being a part of that. The second thing is to our Parks and Rec Group. And by the way, the pools are now open for rental. So, if anyone wants to rent a pool, if there's any nights left, hurry and call into Parks and Rec, and you can rent pools because they're going to go quick. But to our Parks and Rec, I've had the opportunity for the last couple of months to coach my son's baseball team at Cactus Yards. It's an amazing facility with what Parks and Rec has done with it. It's fun to watch the kids be able to play. I missed a game tonight, but fortunately, I got a video of my son hitting the ball off the Green Monster at Fenway again for another home run. So, we, as a family, appreciate Parks and Rec for all their efforts on Cactus Yards. It's an amazing facility, and it's lots and lots of fun to be able to play there.
I don't have any additional report this evening, but thank you to everyone who's been here and participating. We know it's been a long spring. Summer's ahead of us, but thank you for all of your work, and we're looking forward to finishing out the last three weeks of school right here in the town of Gilbert. So, thank you. Meeting adjourned.